Good afternoon, it's 5 o'clock. Ms. Harris, will you give us our prayer and Councilman Crone, will you follow with our pledge?
Tried to run away.
Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just want to thank you, Lord, for many blessings. Thank you for your Holy Spirit, God. Continue to fill this place, oh God. Saturate our minds, oh God. Word out of our mouth, oh God. Let me hide behind your cross, and Lord, I lift this city up to you, oh God. Cover it with your blood, fill it with your love, wrap it in your mercy, oh God. And, Lord, continue to bless our mayor, as he continue to lead this city, Lord, and try to bring new things into this city, to make this city a haven for West Memphis, oh God. Lord, we thank you this meeting. We bless your holy name. We give you glory, we give you honor, and we give you praise, because it's in your name, oh God, that we live, we move, and have our being. And we thank you right now for life, oh God. Thank you for your covering. Thank you for your love, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. Lord, we thank you for your mercy, because you've been so merciful to us, oh God. Thank you for our police department. Thank you for our fire department. Keep them safe, oh God. As they go through this holiday, God, you protect our police, oh God. Cover them with your blood, oh Lord. Wrap them in your love, oh God. And as our fire department go out to house to house, Lord, you keep them healthy, God. Glory to your name, Jesus. And look on our finance department, as he try to find us money, God, to develop more in this city, oh God. Wrap your loving arms around us, oh God. Lord, lift this city up, oh God, so everyone can see West Memphis, God. Lord, we thank you, Lord. We praise you, oh God. We can't do nothing without you, Lord. We can't do nothing without you, oh God. So, Lord, acknowledge us to more, God. Let us have that love that run from heart to heart and breast to breast. Tighten us up, Lord, while we too loose, loosen us up if we too tight, oh God. Bind us together in love and understanding with one another, God. Lord, we thank you right now, God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge my pledge.
I pledge my pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternally Father.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Okay. Mayor Clinton.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suter.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce.
Here.
Councilmember Kat.
Here.
Councilmember Crone.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson. Councilmember Hutchinson. Councilmember Muhammad.
Present.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Whelis.
Here.
Nine out of ten.
We got nine out of ten. Present, we have a quorum. I'm going to go to bid openings. I need to add some to the agenda. I want to add the insurance bids. We, the committee met yesterday, and they recommended Cigna. They was the lowest bid. We had the conversation and discussions with the council. It was wide open. First off, can I get a motion and second to add to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We got Councilman Kat and Council, I mean Councilman Crone and Councilman Whelis to, on the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Oppose? Is added to the agenda. The body recommended Cigna, who was the lowest bidder. Can I get a motion and second to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Where's Cigna? All right. Minutes. Can I get a motion and second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The minutes are approved. Old business, City Attorney?
This is third reading of an ordinance to repeal ordinance 1988 as amended and adopt a new comprehensive zoning text and zoning map and for other purposes.
Hearing the way for the third and final time, can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That ordinance is passed. Can I get an ordinance number, City Clerk?
Twenty-five ninety-one.
That number again, what?
Twenty-five ninety-one. Two-five-nine-one. All right. Next, City Attorney?
Third reading of an ordinance to repeal ordinance number eight-seven-six of the city of West Memphis amending section two of ordinance number three-seven-two and for other purposes.
Hearing the way for the third and final time, can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor? No, please, go ahead.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Go ahead.
The only question I had was it, would this affect Main Street? Section of, or town?
Yes, it will.
Does it yet?
Just wanted to make sure on which exact sections we're amending. We're not removing the requirement for a business license issued by the state of Arkansas.
No.
We are not removing the requirements that it cannot be located within 300 feet of a residential subdivision or anything zoned residential. And we're not repealing the adequate parking for all patrons.
No.
The only thing that we are repealing is the five corridors, which is Broadway, Missouri, Woods, Avalon, and Walker. They can allow within those 300 feet.
You talking about, we talking about the biggest part of it wasn't dancing on Broadway, correct?
Right.
And repeat the last part you said now?
The five corridors are Broadway, Missouri, Woods, Avalon, and Walker. Originally, it was within 300 feet, so that's being removed. And within those five corridors, it would be allowed.
Okay.
Or is it just Broadway only?
I think it's Broadway, all the Broadway. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Councilman Monday saying this, but I don't think that it just on those streets, just Broadway, if someone opened a facility up where dancing was.
Well, when we repealed it, it took those out. So I just wanted to make sure where we're at. And if it's only Broadway.
Okay.
I guess, I didn't know if we could make an amendment just to clarify it, that it did not remove the items that were just mentioned.
You talking about force on Broadway if a business being right beside Missouri or Ingram?
It's my understanding, we're wanting to remove the 300-foot requirement on Broadway and Broadway only. Not on the other corridors.
I'm talking about just remove, just all of it.
From each corridor?
The other side, the other side street too, Walker and Mizuville?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's just simply, the motion is, or the amendment would be to clarify that we are deleting the 300-foot requirement within the aforementioned corridors, which are Broadway, Missouri.
That's correct.
Woods, Avalon, and Walker. But it does not delete the requirements for a state-issued license, required parking, and you cannot be within a residential zoned area. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
If I may, make that motion.
Okay.
Is this dancing off the, you know, Broadway and the streets that you've got written down?
Hold, hold, hold. We'll go to you.
Second.
Let's see. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Is it, this doesn't pertain to topless dancing, does it?
Doesn't mean what now?
Topless dancing, anything like that. Is this regular dancing, or is this?
Let me, let me clear that up. Oh, God, sometimes. Topless dancing has to be in an I-2 zone. All right.
Let's just.
No, no, this is my, um, can I get a motion to approve? Oh, we got the motion and second then, we did the amendment with Councilman Kat.
Right.
And that amendment, what he did. So now I'm calling for the answer.
Just to make sure, the City Clerk, you're.
We're voting on the amendment, right?
Correct.
Now, we voted on amendment.
Right.
And we voted on the, oh, no.
Is there anything that needs to be clarified for you?
So, there was a first motion and a second motion. It was Crone and Kat. Correct?
Right.
So now you're going for the vote, is that correct?
There was a motion and second to amend.
Amend. Yeah.
Myself and Mr. Crone.
Same.
Thank you. And can we read it for clarity, what the amendment is? Can we read it for clarity?
I'm sorry.
I just want it to be read or spoken in clarity, what the.
Do you want me to restate the motion or the amendment?
Would you do that, just for clarity?
Yeah, just for clarity, that the, the new ordinance does not delete the adequate parking facilities to be provided for all patrons. It does not delete the requirement for a business license issued by the state of Arkansas. It does not remove the requirement of the 300 feet of a residential zoned area. It does remove the 300-foot requirement on Broadway, Missouri, Avalon, Woods, and Walker. That's my understanding.
That was correct.
Yes, that's what was voted on.
Were there any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll just for clarity?
Okay. Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Kat.
Yes.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Hope.
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Muhammad.
Yes.
Councilmember Muhammad.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Councilmember Whelis.
Yes.
Ten out of ten.
We got ten out of tens. And it passes. Will you get that ordinance, eight number, please?
Two-five-nine-two.
That number's two-five-nine-two. Going down to the third reading, be the first reading of the tax. But before we go into that, I need to make a statement real quick. When we first started looking at what can we do to affect public safety, our seniors and our youth, and economic development, we sat around and we said, what are some of the ideas of the people? We, through A and P, we was able to get studies done to show what would be good financially, so if it was not be at just the top of the here ideal. I had the opportunity to go around speaking at churches as well. I spoke at three schools, which was Falk Elementary, Richland, and Swell, that's Weaver. And pretty depending on what part of town you was at, you all had different responses. I met with people who were overwhelmingly in support of it. I met with some that was against it. And it's fair because it's a decision that the people of West Memphis will have had to make. I did hear some things that really hurt my heart when I hear people talk about the men and women in our police and our fire department, when we talked about building new police, a new police station, having our fire department caught the very ones that talk about, if they were to fall sick right now, the same individual would be here trying to pump and really revive you right now. If your house was on fire, the one that you said was not doing a good job would be at your house to put your fire. And if a gunman came in here right now, that she left this room, the very ones who said, some in here now, that they were not doing a great job, this police department put their life on the line to save you. I think the men and women deserve more respect than that. Now, what I'm going, thank you. I'm going to continue going around to schools, churches, and talking to individuals about this. But I'm going to be smart, because I understand that sometime we may have a difference of opinion. And I'm one that truly promotes one West Memphis. You may not necessarily like the direction that I'm going in, but give me your idea. Right now, I'm challenging and not challenging, but I'm asking my council members to meet with me, to come up with ideas, as well as, we're going to have meetings starting December, January, and February. And I want to hear from you, because it's not good enough for you to say it's time for West Memphis to move, but not bring nothing to contribute to making West Memphis better.
Amen.
Now, my. We probably rushed, because I'm tired of seeing it stay still the way it is. It may be, it may need to come back a little bit. It may need to come more. It may need to be done a little more on this end, or a little less on that end. But I want to work with us as a community. And I'm going to challenge you all, starting in December, when we have these meetings, starting in January and February, I need to hear from you all. Because people are not going to be at houses in West Memphis, because it's nothing to do for our youth. If you look at TV, right walking distance from us is murders every day. Our senior citizens need something to do. Our police department, whether you like them or not, they need a new play. Do men and women put their lives on the line and have to come to a building that's falling apart. We need emergency service protection to make sure that our cities where that and economic development, we sell on the interstate, they got 65,000 vehicles that come to our city every day. And we don't stop them to get a dime. So for the ones that saying what we don't need, I want to hear your opinion. I want to hear what you bring to the table.
Amen.
That's what I'm asking. So what I'm going to do, I'm not going to divide my council to go for or to go against it. What I'm going to do, sit down and ask you all to meet with us, starting next month, and we will definitely do everything we can to promote it, to address public safety, economic development, and finally provide something for our children in West Memphis to do, and our senior citizens, because there's a stat that bothers me so much to my heart, and I'm getting ready to go with this. In West Memphis, from 1990 to 2021, there's been 141 murders in this city. And out of 141 murder, 135 murder have been young black men that look just like me. We got to start to invest in our cities, to change their trajectory, the way that we change, that we look at making things better for them and our city. If no one's coming here, if no one building here, and just sitting around hoping and praying that something happen, it's not going to work. We've done that for the last 30 years. So, as I bring unity right now, it's another day, May the 10th, that's coming up. I'm going to ask my councilmen, Councilman Monday, will you table the next three ordinances indefinitely? And after we table this, I ask you to come here and join with us, this council, and give us your idea. It may be one this, it may be one of that. So we can come here and approve something for our people in this city, and make this city much better, so we can move West Memphis forward. It's time out to stop standing still and not doing nothing. Ms. Monday?
I'd like to actually table this indefinitely.
Take a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold, 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 hold. We table the next three ordinances.
Right.
Mr. Murray, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's tabled. All right. We had no new business, no permission request, committee reports, police department? Fire department? Utility department?
Utilities, I've got utilities. You want me to read both of mine while I've got them out?
Yes, sir.
Utilities met this time on Wednesday, since it's at the regular schedule on Thursday. And the first item they approved were the minutes from the last month. The second item that was approved was the safety report. Safety Director Brett Sims, who seems to be doing a very good job with the utility commission and keeping injuries down. 14 days since the last recordable injury and 749 days since the last lost time accident. And one injury in the month of October. The personnel met the third, update on personnel was third. There were no new hires, one volunteer resignation. And the utility company continues to have openings for their services in the city, 18 openings out of 83 budgeted openings. The next item they talked about was approved to assist in helping purchase a drone for the city to be used by multi-city members. That motion passed unanimously. The next item was approved of a salary adjustment that's in the budget that we will be looking at here in this, this monstrosity here. Two, about an inch and a half of paper there. But that will be coming up. And the next item was approved in 2022 budget, was unanimously approved by the commission. And the last item that we had discussed was that the approval of the write-offs in 2019, and the accounts pending that were written off were, in 2019, were $2,039, $239,11, $111,17.75. When I first came on, I'm going to say, when I first came on this, this city council, the write-offs were in the 800,000 number. So I think that Todd and his crew over there done a very good job of collecting on the unpaid bills, because now we're down to about $239,000. That concludes the utility report. The West Memphis Chamber report met on November the 10th. The mayor was present, updated for the businesses and detailed administration accomplishments and goals for the new year. The chamber will be welcoming 10 new directors at the December meeting. And the staff recently helped coordinate the city's veterans parade, which was a huge success, if you saw it or attended it. And a lot of people were involved in that. I see Anita Bell out there, and James Poehlum up here, and the mayor up here. They were all involved in it. Then they are also now coordinating the Christmas parade, which is going to be on December the 7th at 7:00. And if you have a reason that you would like to be in that Christmas parade, all you need to do is call the Chamber of Commerce and let them know what you want to do, and they'll, they'll set you up. There are also, this year, we've done this before, but this year, they're setting up a petting zoo on the outside of the city's Christmas tree lighting coming up Tuesday at 6:00 PM. So there'll be a petting zoo for children if they want to, you know, touch some animals that are actually running around. But that concludes my chamber report.
Thank you, Councilman. Airport?
Got the airport. Highlights today is Airport Commission meeting. Ms. Kendra Suter, Airport Manager. Hangar number three rehab is complete, pending final inspection. The commission approved extending Garver, Garver Engineers contract for two more years. Commission also approved a 2022 budget as presented. The airport received an FAA grant for a new beacon from the time that the project was bid. Until receiving the FAA approval for the project, the cost of the beacon increased $20,000. The commission approved splitting the cost 50/50 up to $10,000 of the oldage of the cost of the beacon with Broadway Electric, which was a local electrician. And that's mine for the day. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Whelis. Public Works?
Of course, we'll be coming to you at the next meeting.
All right.
Fire.
Fire?
Fire, fire. Mr. We move me at Tuesday, November 16th at 12:00. We have new hires. We have three hire firefighters and two firefighters are in, excuse me, AFA school. We have no vacancy on the fire side, but we have eight vacancy on the paramedic side. And the problem with that is, it's competition with salaries. Retirement, we had two retirements, and they just received a 2021 turnout gear for this year. We still in need of the vehicle that was taken out. We need another vehicle in the fleet. Building maintenance, they repair two interior doors on station number one. There's no training at this time. EMS calls year-to-date was 3,600. EMS collection year-to-date was $39,1739.28. Emergency operations up to date, they redid all the emergency plans, updating the SOP, the standard operation procedure, and new training facility. They talked with the superintendent concerning the junior firefighters program. And Dr. Bruce was in on that. They talk also to the high school, to the high-risk strategy, tactics for soft land. So they're looking forward to going to training for that. So that's my report for the fire department.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harris. Parks, I'm sorry, Ms. Muhammad?
Yes, sir. The Parks Commission met on 11/16/21. There are no new financials. The budget has been submitted with a slight increase in services and labor. Tori is managing the capital budget, and once the numbers are finalized, a copy will be given to each committee member for review. Physical plant, renderings for the new sign to be placed at the Sunny Wings Basketball Court were distributed to each member. Painting of the court, along with painting at Franklin Park, is being delayed due to weather issues. And there needs to be a consistent temperature of over 60 degrees for the application to work properly. The lights at Franklin Field will be added to the park's capital improvement projects for next year. The utilities department has agreed to do the word if the parks department supply the fixtures, wiring, cross trellises, et cetera, to complete the upgrades. The parks director spoke with Billy Joe Hayes of the L.R. Jackson Activities Center, who he is the director, and commission members about usage, usages, and needs for the field and lights. And a meeting will be scheduled after the center completes their basketball, after the center completes their basketball season and begin to play baseball and softball. No updates on the contracts for the architects on the parks bond renovation plan. And city attorney, Mr. Parker, wanted me to ask you about if there's anything on your desk that may need to be signed in order for us to proceed, any kind of a paperwork on this bond issue.
From Mr. Parker?
Right, from, regarding the bond issue, the $250,000.
I haven't gotten anything from Mr. Parker to my office, so I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Okay. Well, he told me to ask you if you have any paperwork in your office regarding the $250,000 bond issue that you are reviewing and waiting to sign off on. Those were the words.
I don't have anything to review.
There's nothing?
In my office that he's talking about. If he's watching on TV, my telephone number's 870-502-5166. He can give me a call.
Great. He told me to ask you. Now it's documented that I did, and you've given him your number, so he'll give you your call, I'm sure. The last update was that the city attorney was reviewing them. This, that was his last update.
I have a doctor.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just the ear and mouthpiece. We cannot move forward with any meetings or plans until those contracts are signed and delivered back to the architect. That's the importance of the paperwork. So when you all have a meeting of the mind, then perhaps we can move forward.
Yes, ma'am, always got. Just give me a call. I'm available.
Yes, sir. I've delivered the word, and that's all I can do. The trout fishing program will begin at Children Rogers once the ambient temperatures of the water in the lake is below 53 degrees. And if you want to do a little bit of trout fishing when the temperature is up, go out there and enjoy it. I mean, it's really relaxing to do a little bit of fishing. And he told me something very interesting, said that the trouts, instead of using live baits, they like corn. Bait your hook with, with corn. I've got to try that. This will ensure the survival of the trout that is being furnished and stocked by the state's game fish and wildlife department. The A and P department has begun decorating Worthington Park for the annual Christmas tree lighting program. A date will be announced when the official tree lightings, lighting will occur. Programming. West Memphis Christian High School has concluded playing their fall girls softball schedule. The Quinian County Boys and Girls Club have completed, completed their fall soccer schedule. Adduct League softball is currently playing games at the Marion Rose Softball Complex. And the academies of West Memphis has begun practicing baseball in anticipating. in anticipating of starting their baseball season this spring. The Miracle League, the Miracle League is kind of like a special needs league, which is a very, very important and crucial to our children. The Miracle League has concluded their season at the Adaptive Sports Field at Tilden Rogers Park. We had that done some years ago, under another administration. This is a special league, and the director feels that Shelby Jo Fenter Moore needs some special recognition for coordinating this league, voluntarily giving her time and effort to make it something special for all of the participants. It takes time, patience, and effort to work voluntarily with special needs children and a love for their participants. A meeting is scheduled on eleven twenty-nine with Trey Tucker, the Arkansas USSA State Director, for Fast Pitch and Owner Southwest Sports Production to host a tournament at Tilden Rogers Park next year. Clay Ritchie of USSA State Director in Mississippi wants to meet about hosting tournaments at Tilden Rogers Park next year. The director gave Marion High School, when I say director, I'm talking about, uh, Mr. Parker. I just wanted to clarify that. I've said director numerous times, but I'm talking about Mr. Lorenzo Parker, who is the director over Parks and Rec. The director gave Marion High School a verbal agreement to partner with Marion High School and allow usage of the high school field at Tilden Rogers so that Marion High School could submit a bid to host the six-A state baseball tournament in May of twenty twenty-two. And that is my report.
Mayor, I need to make a correction.
Yeah?
I need to make a correction.
Okay.
On EMS collection year-to-date, should have been three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Mohammed, I'm sorry. Did I overlook any, uh, committee report?
Mayor.
Budget, okay.
The, uh, council and two treasurers, the clerk have been presented with the nine-thirty-twenty-one revenue versus expense report. I apologize for the late delivery, so they'll need a few days to review, and they can start answering questions before we do budget. Everybody has a copy of the twenty-twenty-two budget handout along with a schedule of when the meetings will be, and we will start Monday at four.
Monday at four?
Yes, sir.
He said the schedule's already in. I take it?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry if I... Okay.
Yeah, it should be inside your budget. It just kind of inserted in there. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Cat. City Treasurer?
We just received the data on the financials. We'll have a report probably in the next week or so during the budget hearings. It will present it to the public next city council.
All right, thank you. We have no other city business, uh, yes?
Yeah, we can wait on it, but I still want to just make a little comment on something.
Okay. City Treasurer, uh, City Clerk, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. One thing I want to, well, just thank everyone who came out to make our Veteran, Veteran Day Parade a success. We appreciate everyone who came, who came, came out to make it a real success because without, other words, it was overwhelming, you know? Just leave it at that, and we just really appreciate you. One other thing that I wanted to say, I mean, just for its request itself. Well, I had a couple things, but one thing, the mayor and I, we talked about it, and we want to talk over something this coming Monday. But one other thing that I want to bring to mind, we, uh, look at our men's and women's in uniform and talk about the police, fire, and our dispatch. You know, um, when you sit down and, uh, look at the job that they're doing, the training that they have to go through, and when you turn around, I mean, it really makes your heart set. I mean, when you find out actually per hour how much they make. And, um, I just think that this council alone, the administration, if we could just sit down with finance and everyone try to find ways to, uh, increase those salaries, because I think it will work for his morale and retention. I mean, because when you sit back and you look at the hour of wages, I mean, you, fifteen dollars just starting, and sixteen dollars if you got experience. I mean, you think about it, it's a shame. But I think that there are some ways, looking down the road, that we can do some things. Of course, we got, thank God for Southland, of course, you know, and that nineteen percent, um, tax that they have given us. I mean, when we come, you had an opportunity to set aside four-point-four million, you know, out of, out of the, uh, you know, put it into the general fund. But I think that there's ways too that we can take a look at that and try to make something happen with that. Because I believe that there is salary in here, including the dispatch. Because if you've never been in the dispatch center, you need to go in there and just see what goes on because that's the lifeline to the police officer and fire. And when you call in and you need them, you need them. And the information that they have to be sound-minded in order to get the information correct, to make sure that the police or the fire, whoever's dispatched, whatever the incident may be. And, uh, like I say, until you need them, you, you really won't know what they really do. And I just think, you know, just figuring in my mind, I mean, I'm not going to say it because, um, I just want this council to sit down alone with the mayor, try to help him find ways to boost those salaries because they definitely need to be boosted. And because if you go around, you look, I mean, you just think about it. And that's just what I want to put out there as well.
City Clerk, uh, you want me to go first, or you want? I was just gonna, uh, sort of second what the clerk said and just let him know that's something that we've been looking at already. We, we've been looking at doing that, and that's why when I, I kind of spoke, I got a sort of emotion about when I hear people talk about my police, fire, and paramedics because they jeopardizing their lives. They're coming to dangers to save you. And when you all say these things about them, it may, it's no problem with me. May have some concerns that we need to correct. But if someone comes shooting today, one, either one of these men going to put their life on the line and would die to save you. And I sit there and look at me and hear y'all say that they ain't doing a good job, or, or we got problems, or our police department needs to get better. That's why I defend me. So I agree with him. We need to make sure we give as much money as we can.
Yeah, I, uh, I wanted to let the public know that I and some of the other councilmen went over to the police department several years ago and looked at it, and back then it had mold in it. It's really, it leaks, it leaks bad, I'm talking about, and they hadn't been able to stop it. And we need a new police department. It's serious. You know, I, we, we, we went in and they had shelves up trying to let the water drain over the cabinets. It's ridiculous how, how it looked in there, and, and we need a police department bad.
We do.
That's old bank. That's what it was. Now it need to be torn down and something build new. And I just want to say that, I just had to say that, that our police have to go through with that every day. And, and we need somewhere for them to work decent.
Councilman, you one thousand percent, and what we're going to do, because we tabled it, like we agreed, we know by December, I'm going to set a date for all of you all to bring your ideas because saying no, or we not going to spend any money, we got to, we invest in our city. Like it or not, we got to do it. So on the set there, I mean, I want all you all out there to be here, to give me your ideas, and ask this council to come and get, get them, give us their ideas. And we put something together, together, and pass unanimously. If there's not anything, I get a motion and second? Okay, the tree lighting. Uh, Mr. Jackson, what, what day?
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Tuesday, twenty-third is our tree lighting. We want to invite everyone to, uh, at six o'clock, we want to invite everybody. They're, Worden Park, Worden Park at six o'clock for the tree lighting. Yeah.
Well, when are we going to light the one at, uh, Mollus King Park?
It'll be, it'll be lit the same day. It'll be lit the same day.
Same day, same time, as we?
Yes. We're going to have some county officials, like a ceremony.
Uh, I, I was hoping people would come out to see it, you know, so I wanted to let them know.
Let's put you on, uh, we can.
Okay, all right. Let's set up something, all right. All right, thank you.
Is there any other announcements? Ma'am?
It'd be, it'd be all right if you could do it at a different time so everybody could come. Like maybe four o'clock and six o'clock.
Okay.
Well, that's exactly what we've done in the past.
Okay, all right.
Is there any other announcements?
I just want to tell you, Mayor, I think you've been doing a great job for us trying to bring things into West Memphis and let West Memphis grow. And I thank you for that. I thank you for the vision that God has given you for West Memphis. And the people that don't want their kids to have nothing, don't have no relationship with their kids.
I appreciate that.
Because that's the only way we're going to have anything. If you don't plant nothing, like I've said in the past, you're not going to get anything. If you don't work together and pull together to bring something in here, we're not going to get nothing. We've been stagnated for the last sixty years. So it's time for us to move. And those that don't want to move, they need to lay back and die. All right? I have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, and everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. Can I get the motion second to a general?
I make a motion.
Uh, Mr. Gav.
You want to keep this park's rep plan?
Have we adjourned already? All in favor, aye?